No three on May the seventh, 2024, this strategic priority workshop is now called to order. We will start with the workshop itinerary, which is item A, which is capital improvement plan priorities. Daniel, you're on.
Mayor, council members, audience, what we want to do today, we do have an item that will be coming before the city council at the next city council meeting for the CIP, for a decision by city council. So what we wanted to do today is make sure that we covered the CIP priorities. Council members, you've had an opportunity to submit your top three, and they've been listed. You'll see that they're actually broken into two different categories. One of them is the active category. Those are priorities or CIP items that we're currently working on. And then also the proposed ones, which I want to make sure we go into some discussion to determine which one of those are key ones that the city council would like to prioritize. When we look at funding strategies, we'll be talking about a couple of issues that need really be addressed by city council. Finance has a really good idea on how to address the, some of the needs that we have through rolling and short-term debt. We'll have a good discussion about that. And then public safety has been a big item of discussion for us. So we'll have a, an overview when we get to that item. I have a few things I'd like to share with the city council members, and we'll take it from there. But with that, that's just a quick overview. I'm going to go to hand this over to Tina and Kim to go ahead and kick this thing off.
Thank you, Daniel. Tina Dierski, Director of Finance. I'm starting out here. This first slide is just kind of to show you the big picture of what we have in the works. We have 50 active projects at a total cost of $440 million in the plan, 56 proposed projects at a cost of $281 million, for a total of 106 projects at $722 million. And of course, as Daniel just mentioned, we are proposing the public hearing and adoption of this capital improvement plan at the next city council meeting. Just a reminder that the capital improvement plan is a, is a planned document. It's not a funding plan. And so as we discuss these items, as Daniel said, some of them are active and funded, and others will, will maybe have recommended funding sources, things like that, as we work through the slides.
Would you first of all, go through what constitutes a project submitted to the capital improvement plan? So what are their criteria?
Has to take at least two years to complete, a cost of $25,000 or more, and I think that's it.
So those two things drive this?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you look at the $722 million, there's no time limit in terms of when these projects would come up for funding? It's just capital improvement projects that we know need to be done?
At some point in time, yes, ma'am. Some are in the five-year range, others are even further out into future projects. But the purpose of the plan and why it's included as a requirement of the city charter is that city council is made aware of needs, not only in the next five years, but into the future, so that we can have plans to address those. You know, that's, in 2016, we implemented the Rolling Street Debt Issue Plan. That was kind of a result of some of these types of discussions, so that we're planning into the future and getting things done as we can.
As we, and you don't have to have it right now, but what I do want, even if it's not before May 21 or May 21, is what of the $722 million is in the five-year plan?
Okay.
Because we need to understand how big five years is, and how we're going to take care of the five-year need to get done in five years, because the clock is ticking.
The ones that we're presenting today are all in the five-year plan.
Okay. So they would start and complete within a two-year window within five years?
Not necessarily, but...
Because that's what we said the criteria was, completed in two years.
It means that the project has to take that long to complete.
I know, that's what I said.
But yes, these are the projects that, that directors or managers have submitted, that they think council needs to be aware of, that they think need to at least be started within the next five years.
And can we ask that our, that those be prioritized?
By, by whom? By the directors?
Uh huh. Within their world.
Sure.
So if you're looking at water, if you're looking at sewer, if you're looking at which, whatever area you're responsible for, what are your priorities? And is it realistic to say that we can get those funded and started and completed within a two-year window, within that five years?
Yes, we could definitely ask department directors to do that.
Because that's got to be top of mind.
And then Tina, we want you to tell us what to do.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Done.
Go ahead.
Also want to point out that as far as the CIP project items, before an item can be considered, as far as CIP, it has to be included in the CIP plan. And so that's important. A lot of people come to us, sometimes citizens, and say that they want something funded. But unless city council, unless we actually put the item on there, it can be considered by city council. So those items that are, that are on the run are can be considered.
So the first act has to be included in a CPI?
In the CIP, yes, ma'am.
CIP, sorry, CPI, CIP.
You're thinking of this consumer price end experiment.
Hold it, Mayor, we'll, we'll help you.
Okay, thank you. All right, move forward.
So Daniel had asked city council members to each submit their three top capital improvement project priorities, and then we consolidate those into a list in no specific order. But the, the first slide here is showing projects that were submitted by council members that are already active and have some, at least partial funding for them. So we weren't going to go into a whole lot of detail on these, just because they are already active and, and partially, if not completely funded. But if you have questions on any of these in particular, then we can go into a little more detail.
Well, the Glenne Drive is funded, right? I mean, that, because we're working it now. It's torn up and we're doing it, right? Or we're somewhere in the, it's okay, Shane, it's all right. But I know it's been...
Mayor, these are just the projects that council members expressed as important to get completed, and they wanted to make sure that they included them on there, and that's why we have that highlighted up there as active projects. So again, it's just to reinforce that, yes, the commitment is there. As a matter of fact, we've already started these projects, and we'll continue working through these.
Questions?
Tina, you said these are no particular order.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. You know what? I don't have a copy of that.
You didn't get it yesterday?
No, sir. No, I didn't.
Okay, Mayor.
There you go, Mayor.
Got it. I got it. They gave me one. I didn't meet yesterday, so, I met last week, so we didn't have that.
I said, don't give it to them.
I know.
No, we didn't say that.
So these are the remainder of the projects that were submitted by council members, and these are proposed capital priorities that are not yet funded, but that are priorities for city council members.
And really, what I'd like to do with these, Mayor, council members, is so these are the proposed capital projects. These are the ones that may have a little bit of funding, but still don't have, for instance, the river stage does have a, a funding source for a portion of it. But the others are items that were brought up by council members that, quite frankly, of course, we don't have the deep pockets and the funding to fund all of these, for sure. But we definitely wanted to make sure that we came up with a listing, hopefully, a listing of one through three, which ones, consensus-wise, the city council members would say are the ones that are most important, that we should be taking care of. So again, these items are, are up there for your review. If you have a specific item you'd like to discuss at this point, we're prepared to put that on the screen, and we have directors here that can address those more specifically.
Do you want me to move on? We have, we do have a slide for each one of these, since they aren't yet funded, we figured there might be more discussion on them. So we can move on to that first slide.
You got it.
So the first slide is the river stage renovation. Expected capital cost for phase one of $1.6 million, and for phase two of $4.4 million. We do have some ideas that will suggest, we have a little bit of funding set aside for this phase one already, and then we have some ideas that will suggest later on in the conversation that may be an additional funding source for this project.
So clarification on phase two, $4.4 million, is that not $1.5 million worth of the lift station? Isn't there a $1.5 million piece of that, the lift station, that which also would have to be done in order to develop the Edgewater Inn property?
Al is saying 1 million for that part.
1 million? Okay. So FYI, it's not very specific just to the river stage, but also to the Edgewater Inn development, which I think everybody knows what.
Is that 1 million in there?
Yeah. Yeah. The other part that I want to remind everybody about the river stage renovation is the following, and that is, is that we are lucky, as a city, that we have this asset called the river runs through it. Every community wants to have a river that runs through their downtown or their city. It's one of our greatest assets. And I say the following, with it being one of our greatest assets, what we want to make sure that we do is to take care of all those things and those projects and those properties that we own on the river to put our best foot forward. Statistically, when you take a look at the performances that are happening on the river stage, the numbers are pretty amazing in terms of, here it is out in the open, hot, 115-degree weather, you're sitting on stickers and dry dirt, and yet we still have a tendency, or we have proven that people will still tolerate those conditions and come out and participate to events at the river stage. And I think that's key in terms of looking at why we want to continue to upgrade and take care of one of our great assets on the river. So those are my comments on that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I want to go hearken back to something council member Thomas alluded to several meetings ago about public-private partnerships, and how they tend to work well in many cases. And this is just, I would say, there's nothing specific to this, there's nothing, I'll say, flesh on the bone of this, but the city may be presented with an opportunity on that Edgewater Inn redevelopment with the possibility of a public-private partnership to help move that along. Is that going to happen? I don't have a clue.
Well, what I can tell you on that project is the following, is that they're getting ready to try to put together a feasibility plan?
Right.
To address whether it will or will not make, if you will, for someone to do that project. But you're taking, you know, if you look at that, you're looking three years minimum before that project will come to reality. And so you could hold it up, hoping that the feasibility study says, yes, it works. You need it anyway. You need that lift station to happen.
Well, and I am in full agreement with that. My, my point is just, kind of the bigger picture is, we may have an opportunity to participate as the city to help move the project even, maybe more quickly or further down the road. So again, that, that's getting off in the weeds when we really don't have any weeds to get off into yet, so.
Well, and I think they're dramatically separate projects. So the Edgewater Inn is a big wish list, which we really think will add a lot to the city. We need it developed, we want it developed. But pulling together the statistics, and that's the reason it's out there for a feasibility study to get done and funded by a private source, is to evaluate the reality of that property, and what investment the city will have to make with that partnership in order for it to make as a project.
My point, thank you.
And so there is, but it will cost the city.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Tom?
On the detail of the river stage, and you're right, towns that have a river that go through it, they push it, they promote it, it's part of what they have. San Angelo, the majority of our commercial development faces away from the river, and we're doing this to make sure the forward progress develops that and changes it. Do we, do we have development plans for the south side of the river that will help push and make this? I understand this, project, there's several projects on here that I think are absolutely necessary, and I want to see this, maybe a little more detail on, you know, what, what are we really, what are we going to, volume size? Is it going to develop the south side of the river? I mean...
Well, we have the plan for the river stage, so we've approved that already. All right, we've approved phase one of that already. If you're asking about the Edgewater Inn property, those properties, or are you talking about the river stage property?
The Edgewater, I mean, the whole development process. I've, I've had people ask me about this, very detailed, saying, okay, I get it, they are not in as much knowledge and share of information as we have. And so I, if somebody could give like a 30, 45-second explanation of, just to help contribute 30,000 of what this is.
That's what I'm talking about, the feasibility study. Because the issue is, and what has to be studied is to determine the viability of a hotel, what size of hotel is it? What about parking? You cross over South Irving, residential, is it condos? Is it townhouses? Is it duplexes? What is it? And the only way we know to answer those questions is to get this feasibility study done, which is in the works, meaning someone has signed up to pay for this feasibility study to determine statistically what the cost might be, what the viability might be, and at what level. Meaning, is it 150 rooms? Do we need meeting rooms with that hotel? Do we need 100 rooms? Do we need a miniature convention center? Do we need townhouses? Do we need duplexes? Do we need condos? What is it we need? And there is conversation, a feasibility study being discussed to address those things so we can make it viable. And the biggest issue is if you take a look at the Edgewater Inn property, is that is a tough piece of property to develop. It goes down, it's, it's going to be expensive to do. And so again, the feasibility study needs to be done to determine the viability on it. Have we had interested people over the past few years? Yes. Have we met with them? Yes. And many were interested, and then here came the interest rates, and it changed the viability. And we also know that we're competing with larger cities for many of these developers in terms of return on investment, whether this one gives them the return on investment that's perhaps they would get in another market. So there's a lot of questions, and that goes back to the reason we're going to do, or a person is going to do this feasibility study, so everyone can look at the sheet of paper and say, I'm interested, I'm not. There's a lot of questions, and they're not answered yet.
So that covers our, I mean, our housing, and we go, but our, our river stage will accommodate X amount of people. We're looking at a site amount of potential hotels, condos, whole thing. It's a whole project that's going to take time.
Well, the river stage is over here, that's its own, it's separate. This is its own thing. They're not connected.
Right, but we got them under one project here.
Only the lift station.
Okay.
Only the lift station. But you can't finish the river stage project without the lift station.
Got it.
Which legitimately is a part of the development of the Edgewater Inn, it would not be surprising that the developer asked the city to put in the lift station as part of their contribution to developing it. So it's out there as a, a need, one way or the other, it's got to happen. Okay, other questions, comments? Okay. You want to move on?
Move on.
Next up is the Foster Communication Coliseum renovation with a, an estimated cost of just over $40 million.
Mayor, there is, there was plenty of, of interest with council members that submitted their, for their request to be discussed today, and this is one of the items that popped up a few times, several times actually, for that discussion. We haven't had one out in the open at this point, to kind of have a, kind of input from council members to see what your thoughts are. We definitely would love to hear those from y'all, and we'll take from there.
My first question is, originally, when this conversation started, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, it was a $28 million project. Then it grew, and now we're at 40.6. What's the difference from the original 28 million to the 40, almost 41 million? And does the 41, that's a capital cost that doesn't include carrying costs? And what does the 40.6 million buy? And what is the, I think my other question is to find, where did this 40.6 million come from? And to talk through what the 40.6 million buys us, and what input has a city given relative to this proposed renovation?
So this project was submitted by Carl, but I think that's just simply a function of him having this division slash reporting under him. But I think he gets his information from the rodeo association, but I would have to ask him to confirm that.
I believe that, that the first figure, the 28 million, was an earlier estimate. So when the Stock Show Rodeo Association got a more educated quote estimate of what the project would be, it came back at about 37 million. But the total project cost includes the design fees, which aren't included in that, any kind of escalation in prices since the quote, the estimate, and also some work at the parking lot that wasn't included in the, in the Coliseum project.
All right. Yeah, Harry, you had your hand up, I think.
Certainly. I'll go back to something that Tommy just said, and it's one of the things I've said for the eight years that I've been sitting up here, and that's public-private partnerships. And I know there are people in this community that want this project to go forward that are willing to invest in this. So I don't think the city is going to be on the tag for the $41 million by themselves. And I know there's people sitting in this room right now that can testify that there are monies out there that are available if we make this a priority. And I certainly am one of the council people that put this as, as a priority on the capital improvement plan. So make that statement, we can have conversations, we'll go forward with it, whatever we need to do.
I have a comment. Yeah, Lucy?
On the other hand, I would like to know firsthand who is going to be in the partnership? Who is going to help the city? And the question that wasn't answered was, when the mayor asked, what are we getting in return? How much money do we actually are going to, we're going to invest this? What is our return on this investment? Is what I would like to know.
Tom?
So I can answer some of these questions. It's in my district. I don't know, I know there's people here from the association. I don't know if they're allowed to speak at a CIP discussion, but I called and spoke to one yesterday, and I said, I know y'all have engineering plans, I want to make sure there's something in it. And they provided me a document that itemizes, to a degree, what I think would cover 80% of our questions today. And I don't know if I should share that now, hand that out. What we're doing now is just talking of, we're putting it on the CIP, but the association has come forward with the opportunity to pay for a percentage of it, all right, out of their own funding. So it's, they're paying for the city's coliseum, you know, or a portion of it, which would be 25%. I don't know how the interest rates affect that as we go in in debt, but they're offering to put some of that money in. And I don't think we've ever really sat down with both parties and lined those rules out, Lucy. I mean, we've never said, okay, who gets this? Do you still, if you're going to pay 25% of the project, do you still have to pay an annual lease? Who takes care of this? I mean, are there things back and forth that we probably need to understand? Who's going to bond? Who's going to insurance? Who's going to be over the project? I talked to Justin just yesterday, and it was like, we start here, but we've never even heard back from the city once your engineers look it over, what you would want specifically. I mean, we have an engineering plan that we've spent money on, but we don't know if that's in agreement with what y'all would request. I mean, when you go up to 9,000 seats, there's other changes you have to make. HVAC, internal infrastructure, there's, I mean, there's a lot of directions everybody has chased to pursue financing for this. But what I will say is, if you look at one thing, that a set of grounds that provides money, there's stock showing there's rodeo, the one that's on everybody's mind right now is rodeo, and it's great, but there's other things you can do when we have somebody offering to pay for the city's coliseum, okay? Pay for a portion of it. I don't know how many, we just talked about inter-local agreements and agreements with private funding that can come in and help, and I think it, it merits discussion. Naturally, you know my history, you expect this from me. It's not a surprise that I'm going to take this stance, but I think there's certainly some times that we should sit together and say, okay, this is here, we're looking at it, what are the options of funding? Because there's, the feedback has been very, you know, me and the mayor have talked about this many times, do you have the money to buy it off $40 million and have a bond that may last for X period of time? Do you have to go to a bond? I mean, if you make something that actually is concert-ready, and now we have people that want to use it for concerts, you can do more in one event here than other things around here all year long. You know, we're going to bring in 9,000 people, and if you sell that ticket, you know, but we, the coliseum as it is, is not capable of generating enough revenue, to be honest, to have a high-dollar concert. I mean, you divide it by 5,000 seats, it's a $5,000 ticket, you know?
I think that's the big challenge. You know, if you take a look at historically, the number of attendance relative to certain events, right? So you, you take a look at the rodeo, which obviously this is, the project was stimulated by the Stock Show Rodeo folks, and certainly because they're the ones who sell the tickets, right? So, but if you go outside the context of the 10 days of the hot-ticket nights, what does exist for opportunity, right? So if you take a look in 2017, ZZ Top was in the coliseum. Most of those people wanted to sit on the floor in front of the stage, not in the seats. There were 4,600 people who came to that. That's the highest number of use, attendance usage, Lucy, of the coliseum. Then you go down to Mercy Me, which is in 2021, 3,088 people attended. If you go to the monster trucks, 2,152 people came. Then if you did monster trucks in '24, 1,828 came. So if you do for King &amp; Country, 2,110 people came. One of the issues with concerts is the following, is, is that you've got a Midland, Odessa incredible facility, Abilene just put in one. A lot of these big bands go from city to city to city. Is there really a chance for us to book at those ticket prices and fill to pay for these bands? They're expensive when we have competition from two other cities as well. And the interesting thing, if you take a look at the river stage, just as a comparison, where you have weather and stickers and dirt, in the Wild West Fest of 2021, the attendance was 5,295 people. If you take a look at Kings of the West in 2022, 4,103. If you look at Parker McCollum, 2022, 3,633. So the question mark is, what is the realism attached to a $40 million project? Can we really fill it to pay for the need outside the context of the rodeo? Or are we spending the money for the benefit of the rodeo when the city won't benefit necessarily much beyond that? And I can't answer it, but it's a question out there when you take a look at it.
The last one you just said is probably the key one that everybody brings up. I mean, they, they bring up the rodeo's ability to have 5,000 people 13 nights in a row, every night they have one, and then to go on to the next step. But my question here is, if we don't put ourselves in a position to compete with Abilene, Midland, and Odessa, we don't have a plug-and-play venue that people come into, we'll never know what a facility like this. I, I think the whole thing is, you know, it's whatever you can have in there, there's indoor paintball tournaments, there's pickleball tournaments, there's, there's a ton of different events, and you get to the end of those 11 months, oh, by the way, we also have a rodeo in here.
Yeah.
So I just want to say, at this point, there are things we need to sit down and discuss, and I don't see the reason these first two projects aren't the primary two that move forward. I mean, they're both value, they both generate revenue and economic impact. We have to proof that up. We've talked about doing economic input studies that are in process to, to proof them up to go with it. Once we get to that number, and it looks good, then I just want to say, we continue those discussions.
I think the big challenge is the following, and this gets down into financials later on, but as it relates to how you finance... on, but as it relates to how you finance projects, how do you finance $40 million? If we go out on a bond, we got, you know, we took out an $80 million bond to do streets, and it's not paid for all that we need done. So, you take, put a $40 million bond out there for a Coliseum, we only have so much bonding of monies available to us. Do we do it for a Coliseum? Do we find a different way to finance a Coliseum so that we don't restrict our ability to bond infrastructure projects, which we know we have to put as a top priority? So, the question mark is financing and funding. And the question mark is, have we looked at the plan as it is presented and made sure that we had input from people other than the rodeo people?
We have not.
And so, that's a number-one issue, is it's a singular perspective, which does not mean it's not a holistic perspective that will work for everybody. There's no, no one's saying it doesn't. But have we? And we haven't. And so...
But I think we can do that, can't we, Mayor?
We can when I'm through, yeah. Yes, we can do that, and we should do that. But my point is, the following is, there's a point in which you start to top out, $40 million does not have carrying costs attached to it. So, the question mark is, what is the final number? How many years does it take? Because that impacts the carrying costs. But everyone believes the Coliseum needs some improvements. There's no question about that. The question mark is, where is the financing? Where's the money? Is it doable? Is it financially capable? And what if it goes beyond 41 million? I mean, how many years? Because if it takes 30 years, you're dated before you complete it. And that's the other issue. So, it's going to take a lot of analysis on that money to figure out what is or isn't viable, how viable, and how do we get it done? Harry?
So, back to my original point. Let's see how much private money is available for this particular project, and then see what it's going to take from the city's perspective. I think it's, well, what we're going to find is, that it's a project that can move forward in a relatively short period of time. Now, I'm not talking about tomorrow, but in a relatively short period of time, in the next couple of years. But to Tom's point, let's sit down and just have this discussion, all, excuse me, all the players, and figure out exactly what it's going to cost the city. If there are issues that we cannot put out there because of the amount of money for bond, well, so be it. Citizens will know that. But we're getting asked regularly, why can't we expand the Coliseum? And if we've got private money out there, let's talk to them.
I think everyone's in agreement. I think, yes, go ahead, Tommy.
I want to zoom out. I'm going to ask our finance staff, is there, maybe, do y'all have access to, does somebody, could y'all find data that would tell us if you invested, it doesn't matter what amount of money, but if you invested 50 million in, let's, because we've talked about, I say "we," there has been talk of renovating this facility in which we sit. I'm just, I keep asking myself, how do we know if the money is well-spent? Would it be better spent here, here, or here? I don't have a clue at this point. So, my question to y'all is, is there data or something that y'all could access that could input data into it, and then it could do its analysis and say, your return on that money, again, doesn't matter the amount, but the return on that money would be better spent likely here? And there's going to be variables plugged into that, no doubt. But is that something y'all could access for us to run that through?
Yes. We use a software called ZackTax for our sales tax analysis, and we can have them look into that and provide some information on either or both properties to show what kind of return on investment, to Lucy's point, we're receiving for the inputs that we put into the projects.
Personally, as just one council member, that would be helpful for me, just to see where's your money best spent. It may be renovation of the Coliseum. It may be renovation of the convention center. If I'm the only council member asking for it, then I guess we don't do it. But I would like to see that data.
No, you're not. You're not. I mean, I think the other issue that everyone has been talking about, and it's been out there forever, is the convention visitor's center building we're in. The reason it's asked a lot is, we're constantly told, right or wrong, good or bad information, that the rodeo does not book hotel rooms. They're local people. We know we're missing out on convention business because we don't have enough breakout rooms in this facility. And the CVB can validate that. We can't go after a lot of these events because of the facility that we have today. So, how do you balance the combination of investing in the convention center where we know we'll get hotel motel tax, and particularly at a point in time where we might be saying that the Coliseum might be paid for in partial by a venue tax? But the venue tax might be increased greater if you had a larger hotel, I mean, a larger convention center versus a Coliseum versus a River Stage. All three have viability. All three have investments needed. The question mark is, what can you invest in today to get your first big best return on it, turn around?
So, if y'all can do that analysis for us, again, it sounds to me like there's pretty much consensus on the council here that that would be helpful data. I would like to see that before we start, I'm going to say, wasting anybody's time.
Absolutely.
Just, so, please.
Yes, we'll do that. We'll do that. It may take a week or two, but we can definitely get them started working on it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Lucy, Karen, I know you're shaking your heads about stuff. You want to make comments?
No, I was just agreeing with Tommy as far as for you to get that paperwork to us or that info, that we would see that. And I think once we get that, then we could start making more, better informed decisions. Yes, Mayor?
I think the end of the day, we all know the Coliseum needs improvements. The question mark is, at what price tag? And how do you do it? We know the River Stage is a great asset, important. We know this convention center needs work done, and it needs to be increased in size unquestionably. And when we say those things, we also know that there's other projects out there that everybody's going to compete with as it relates to monies, whether it's a police station, whether it's additional fire stations, what, there's a lot in that 441 million.
Mayor, I do want to point out that as far as the venue tax itself, I'm glad you all are talking about this, because quite frankly, we do have an item that'll come up here later on, which has to do with the convention center as well. I'm glad that we're talking about that, because we're going to have competing projects here. We need to determine if we're going to use a venue tax, which project are we going to use that on? We're going to be limited by that one usage at a time. So, doing an evaluation is the right way to go, to kind of determine an ROI for the project. And I think that's a good discussion, Tommy. Thanks for bringing that up as well. I agree. I think the Coliseum needs a lot of work. I've loved, I've seen the rendering. I think it's beautiful. It looks wonderful. But again, on our end, since we are limited as far as the resources that we have, we need to make sure that we choose wisely for the biggest impact that we could possibly have for our community.
Those are three big, well, two big ticket items.
They are.
Yes, Tom?
We've gone down that path before of talking about, how many times can we put a $350,000 Band-Aid on the Coliseum, on McNeese? You know, to be honest, we just need an event center. We need an event center with a hotel. We've gone down that path. I think Rick has had discussions, and I think our group has made trips to look at other event centers and say, is that really, I mean, in all honesty, one big event center would cure all these problems. I don't know what you do with these, but just to make it even more, you know, 100 million-ish. But I, so, but that's what other communities have done. It's not, it's not where we've been, it's where we're going. And so, I agree with all of y'all. We need to sit down and look at it. But is this the one council that looks at it and says, well, this is where we go, the biggest step we're going to be that'll get us the next 60, 70 years with hotel, with availability? I get it. But as long as all of these things are willing to be openly discussed, and everybody look at it, all boils down to financing. I mean...
It all gets down to money. I mean, by money is where you find the money. But they're not, it's no one's questioning the viability, and I think that's the key part. No one's questioning the viability. Nobody's questioning the need. Nobody's questioning that it isn't a big want and a big wish and could have a good impact. You know, we are proud of the heritage that the rodeo brings to the table. I think this community has the greatest pride, tremendous pride in what's happening out there. And it's due to the leadership and the organization, and their willingness to listen to input and delivering on that input. And they need a lot of credit for that. We need to figure out how we get these projects done, and that answer can't be answered today.
Agreed.
But what can be done today is, we go forward to find what can be done, what timeframe it's going to take, how we find the money, how we continually improve the city's and citizens' experiences and visitors' experiences. So...
Mayor, we needed that direction, because this conversation's been there for a while now. And we just needed to make sure we got that direction from city council, so we can start looking at viability. We start looking at which projects would be feasible, specific to this one as well. So, again, that's good direction for us. We can start working on some detail on that as well.
Yeah, because these are quality-of-life projects, which are hugely important. But then we're going to have infrastructure challenges, which are real important. And the question...
Don't ruin a good day. Don't ruin a good day.
I'm going to end it on a good note.
We'll vote on that.
Okay, good. So, the question mark is how we separate infrastructure needs, got to have, from quality-of-life issues, and how we focus the monies accordingly. But we've got all of that to get done and figure out.
Okay, Tina, don't disappoint us.
It's in your hands to find the money and the resources, because we want it all.
Yeah, no pressure. Thanks, Mayor.
You are so directed.
Okay, next up, we have the McNeese Convention Center renovation. This, again, is not a broader-scale improvement project, but it's, it is in the capital improvement plan at $350,000.
Well, and part of the, you know, what could happen here, but it won't solve it all, is the possibility of a hotel on the Edgewater Inn property, as well as some meeting spaces there. But it won't satisfy the medium-sized convention needs. I think they're medium-sized, whatever that means, because we still have travel restrictions based off of flights. But we need to look at that. This facility isn't working the way it could.
Tina, I think that's good, because we had a good discussion about that. This is going to be a competing project, if anything. So, let's go ahead and move on to the next one.
Comprehensive plan update was submitted by one or more council members at a capital cost of $750,000.
I would say we can vote on that every meeting for ordinance changes and updates versus spending that 750 on a comprehensive update, which we might need that $750,000 to finance one of these projects.
It doesn't have to be a priority this time around, Mayor, so we get it.
Just saying.
Wow.
But it is something that's going to have to happen.
Let me, let me, I guess, balance what the mayor said. As one council member, it has troubled me over the past several years that I, I'm not going to say "we," but I have not been more diligent in thinking longer term than shorter term. For me personally, the comprehensive plan update is important to help us with future planning. And I could go down my, I've got a rant that I'll, no, I'm not going to go through, that I could go through, about why this should be done. But I don't want to just dismiss this out of hand without, you know, at some point, giving serious consideration to updating our comprehensive plan, because everything we have just discussed, in my opinion, plus multiple other things, with respect to zoning, with respect to planning in general, with respect to rights of way, that we desperately need today on some of these things, all of these things that we've discussed, would then be addressed by a comprehensive plan update. So, just, I'll say, to balance what the mayor said, I hear that, but I don't want to just, I'll say, throw this out with the bathwater. I'll leave it at that.
Tommy, I do want to express that, and I agree with you. The comprehensive plan is something really important. It's going to have to happen in the future, near future, faraway future. It needs to happen. We are looking for grant monies. I can pretty much guarantee, I'm sure the city council would probably agree, that if we receive a certain portion, a grant, that we would need the remainder amount to really balance it out and pay for it. I'm sure that we could bring this back to the city council, and that would be probably not, and that would be approved. You know, it's, you definitely want to leverage whatever monies we receive through the grants. But we are actively looking for those grants right now. And we're hopeful that maybe this will be the year. You know, if not, we'll continue looking at it and plan for the future.
Please do. Thank you.
And the good news is, as we move along on a monthly basis, on, twice a month, we certainly have things that we approve and adjust the zoning accordingly as projects come forward. So, it's not keeping us from moving forward. I get it, and I understand it. I understand the need. It's a lot of money. When we can deal with some of these things immediately, and we have to anyway, because they come forward twice a month. So, yes, Tom?
So, my question to everyone in staff is, does the lack of an updated comprehensive plan prevent development from coming here? Does it prevent economic, people looking at it and say, okay, we know that area of town is now dedicated for housing. We know this area of town is dedicated for commercial. But I will agree with you here, several spots in there, Brenda, is, you know, Santa Rita, Santa Rita, comprehensive plan update. I don't know how much it's going to change it.
It's not.
I don't know how much it's going to change SMD 1 or 2. I mean, North Chavern and SMD 2 are, they're pretty well-defined what they are. I don't know how it changes it going further. If it is developed to where it creates more invitation for people to come look at as for economic potential and growth, I get it. But I'm kind of like you. Sometimes when we do a study, it's a study, and we spend a lot of money to give it. If there's grant money to go forward, I agree with Tommy. But there's parts of San Angelo that we don't know, are they developmental or not?
Well, and we address these issues twice a month on the agenda. They come forward. They're like, we need this change from neighborhood to commercial, or commercial to neighborhood. We address it as we move along. Again, it doesn't mean that we don't need a comprehensive plan at some point in time, but we're not ignoring the needs for development on a regular basis. And that's all I'm saying.
Aaron, does it hinder us not?
Well, I'll go back to something Councilman Thompson said, is where are we going? Our last comprehensive, our major update was in 2003, so 21 years ago.
2009.
Then we had a minor update with River Corridor in 2006, and we had a 2009 minor update with just the downtown economic area. We are two decades behind of decision-making of where are we going as a community. We are that far behind. And it does impact our economic growth. It impacts our property values. Where are we going to actually get more property taxes in the future? What are those areas designated for? So, it does make an impact every day of what we do in planning. And we can do some small fixes as cases come through, but that's not a comprehensive plan of where does our community want to go, and where does our elected officials and administration want our community to go? Is it investment in the Coliseum? Is it more investment in downtown and the river? Is it, where is it at? Is it Lake Nazworthy? Is it a combination? We are very far behind. We know we've been designated for two interstates, and where that corridor may be. And if we don't get ahead of that, we are going to be very far behind. We're going to put challenges to Patrick and Shane and his staff of infrastructure, roads, all those things. Even the CIP plan should be pointing back to our comprehensive plan. What were those decisions made back then to move forward? So, I don't disagree with you, Mayor. I know there are things that cost dollars, but I think we should... Mayor. I know there are, are things that cost dollars, but I think we should, in that five-year window, this is going to be very, very important for our community to look out in the next 20, 25 years, so that we're not putting that next group behind the eight ball of trying to make huge decisions. So, that would be my stance.
Aaron, you said something that jogged a question in my mind. Do we have a clue what it costs and what the, the return is? In the neighborhood, and that may sound like a silly question, but if I, if I said I live in this area town, could you tell me that is beneficial to the city in terms of the revenue with the property taxes, with the commercial that's there, everything that's, is that something that we have at our fingertips now?
I would probably lean on our finance department to assist us. I think they've got some very good numbers, but I don't know that we could go and point to Block A and say, well, this block contributes this much towards our bottom line.
That, in my opinion, the comprehensive plan could help us identify and quantify those areas that, if, if we say, this is for commercial development in this area, and you're going to need another fire station because of the residential that we have planned over here, and you can then, I'll say, shape and form that from the future standpoint. To me, that would give comfort to the, to the business community, to the development community, to have that kind of certainty with, from a, from a comprehensive plan standpoint. Okay, but that, that's something, at some point, I would like to know, is, I'll, I'll say the, the, let's just call it the profit and loss of certain areas of town, and do we want, do we need to look at infill, more infill in certain areas of town? Do we need to look at more, you know, RS3? Do we look at, look, look at more multifamily, et cetera?
Well, it goes back to the number one thing that addresses most of that, and that is the housing study. We know that housing study addresses the needs of the city and the price point of which houses, apartments, townhouses, et cetera, need to be. That housing plan is an important document. It drives, because it tells you what the population of this city is, income per household. It gives you all those statistics. Those statistics tell you where growth is going to happen, because the lot price in Bentwood is not the same as the lot price in Lakeview. So, a lot of the information in that study is at our hands already. We know what it told us. We know where the growth has come from. We know if we have or haven't addressed the housing needs, and we also know that the development community knows way ahead of us where to go. They know where land is going to be important for building houses. The commercial industry knows where they need to be. SAMs knows where they need to be. HEB knows where they need to be. They know the rooftops, and they knew the income in those rooftops. They know it. They have it. That's how they decide what to do. So, again, we've probably spent enough time on this issue. It obviously needs to be done, but we're not ignoring the need on a, on a agenda by agenda basis to deal with the issues at hand. All right, Twin Mountain Drive extension. Oh, you're on, Tina.
Yes. Twin Mountain Drive extension has been submitted to the CIP at a capital cost of $21.6 million. The estimates I've seen were closer to double that amount, but I'm not sure if maybe they included it elsewhere in the CIP, but that's a project submitted by Shane and Patrick.
Shane, does that seem like a realistic number to you? You're pretty good at this stuff. I think you've built a road or two.
Yes, ma'am, the 21.6 is, excuse me, is a good number for the roadway portion of it. What we do have in, in some bigger numbers that we look at is also the water and sewer that would go along with it, the extension of that, as well as sidewalks or other things that would need to go on an arterial roadway. So, the 21.6 does cover the cost of the roadway itself.
But not the development.
But not the development, not the water, not the sewer, those type of things that you would want to probably go in at the same time as you're putting in the road, but again, this is just the roadway side of it, not the water sewer side of it.
Shane, wouldn't it make sense, and wouldn't it make sense for us to start looking at acquisition of right-of-way? We know Twin Mountain is going to be extended. We know it is. It's just a question of when. Shouldn't we start looking at acquisition of right-of-way?
The, the one place that does really concern me is all the growth that we're seeing on South 67, out, out towards the old Steakhouse and, and some of that area out there. That really does concern me about how that growth is really taking on, and, and those properties are being bought up right there and, and developed right now. I think the acquisition in that, that area would be fairly critical for us to go ahead and acquire a right-of-way right there, so we, we will not develop into something that we are going to need to acquire. Otherwise, the extension is going to have to be, keep being pushed out, pushed out, pushed out, until we're out around the lake somewhere.
Yeah.
And then that's not, and that's not really where the road needs to, where the road
Is that included with the acquisition of any right-of-way be included, included in that 21 million?
Yes, I believe that in the 21 million, we did. I do actually have numbers. We were, the surveying and acquisition, just kind of looking at this, was about the 2.5 million for the acquisition of right-of-way, surveying, those type of things that we would need, kind of as a preliminary, to, to kind of ensure that we secure what we need to secure, so the road is in somewhat the same alignment that we have it in our master thoroughfare
Fair point, yeah. I, I, as one council member, I would encourage you to start looking seriously at the acquisition of the necessary right-of-way. To me, that, that, to, to your point, you know, if we want the road to go where we want it to go, where we believe it needs to go, and rather than letting development dictate where it goes and keep just pushing it further west, further west, I would say let's start acquiring the right-of-way we need as soon as you can find the money, wherever that may be. That's just one, one person's thought. I've been a huge proponent of extending Twin Mountain for the last three or four years, a huge proponent of that, so.
Shane, what's the, the cause connected with that phase one that we did, the right-of-way acquisition? How much money we're looking at?
It would be right-of-way acquisition with all the surveying and the, all the stuff that go along with it. About two and a half million is what we have projected right now.
Ten and a half?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, I couldn't, I'm sorry.
Two point, two point five, I'm sorry.
Wrong ear. I was hoping it was the two, not the 10.
Okay.
I remember a number we talked about that was closer to half a million dollar. Was that just the design portion?
The, that was the survey portion of it. The half million is for the, actually getting out and surveying the entire area. Meets bounds, those type of things for, for the acquisition.
It also just gets back to, do you have enough money to take care of your existing streets right now?
It's, 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 it's all, it's all out there. I mean, there's not enough, I don't, I don't know that we can make enough money, but we do what we can.
Well, the question mark is correct. It's been put forward to us, is that we know what's happening out there. It's not, it's something we're fully aware of. How do you protect yourself? How do we make sure that we get the road we want, streets we want? Find the money, find the money, find the money, find the money. I keep hearing that, find the money. You know what? Since we're finding the money, I'm thinking it's lunchtime, and we should take a break right now.
Good idea.
Sounds good, Mayor.
Find the money, Shane.
Find the money.
You got time.
That's Tina.
... at 12:45 PM after Tommy gets his other cookie. I can't imagine. I don't know anybody who would do that. Tina, we've lost where we're at, so you're going to have to guide us.
Okay, we're going to start back up. We finished off with the previous project, and we'll start back up here with River Valley Lane drainage project at an estimated cost of $470,000.
Can I add to this conversation? Shane, when the Republic trucks come down River Valley Lane to pick up the trash, they didn't do a U-turn to come back, and they're constantly taking out the fence. So, the question mark is, could, could we just create a U, you know, a road somehow to do the U-turn there, so the fence doesn't constantly get taken down?
Yes, ma'am, we can definitely look at that. And on this project here, a lot of this is basically elevation changes within the road. It's basically us going in there, cutting down the road, and then rebuilding the base, and then, of course, just putting another two-course layer on top of it, steel coat layer on top of it. That's originally an old steel coat road, so, but that's kind of the basis of this project, and if, if we want to move this project forward, then we, we can also look at putting a bullhead or some type of turnaround at the end to help accommodate the trash trucks there at the end of the road. And, of course, it is city property from the edge of the road, from the edge of River Valley Lane all the way to the river, so we do have enough room to accommodate that sort of-
Thank you.
Turnaround maneuver.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is, this is in my district. There are people out there that do get water in their houses with, with a rain event. I went out there of-
We're praying for that rain event.
Absolutely, we are, but it causes problems. I went out there, not this, not this weekend, but when we had the, the last rain, it, when it rains pretty quickly, pretty fast, that we have water in people's houses. So, as soon, as soon as feasible, th, this would be a worthwhile project for the folks out there that get the water in their houses.
This, and, and this, I'm not sure will address all of those issues on the backside, because there are some other issues coming out of Butler Farms as well, too, into a private, basically detention basin back there, and so I'm not, I'm not sure that this River Valley Lane will cure that completely, but if we can speed the water up leaving River Valley Lane, maybe it will lessen that to some degree.
I, I agree with you. I don't know that it'll solve it. If we had, you know, maybe some property owners that would, would work with us, that might be helpful, too, so.
Correct, and, and like I said, I think this would help the water move on off of River Valley Lane faster. That may alleviate some of those, at least up in the houses issues, but again, I'm not sure it's going to completely fix the general flooding issues of that neighborhood coming out of Butler Farms.
Agreed.
Think any other comments? Okay, moving on. Shady Point.
Bridge replacement at an expected cost of $160,000.
Can someone talk to Shady Point when they chewed up their chicken, I mean, chewed up their cookie and cut it off?
I do have, I do have some comments on that as well. Shane, can I, can our larger emergency vehicles even, is it, is it wide enough for them to cross that bridge?
The bridge, the bridge is actually wide enough, but it's, now that we have it load-zoned, it's, it's not safe enough for one of the fire, larger fire trucks to cross, and definitely not for a ladder truck. And, and so that is one of the issues there with the load, load-zoning on that bridge. And, of course, this is just, this would be a basic replacement, like going back with box culvert instead of an actual bridge structure itself in there. I know that some of the homeowners in that Shady Point, greater Shady Point area in there have expressed wanting us, asking us to raise the bridge so they can get under it with boats and things like that. We're, we're not sure that that's actually going to be able to do anything like that, because we do have water and sewer that runs along the side of the bridge as well, and the sewer's the bigger problem than the water, of course, but those are things that we'd have to overcome as well. And we would have to, and there would be some, definitely some sewer costs and water costs involved with this as well. This is just for the box, box culvert structure itself, not for any water and sewer utilities that would be related costs as well.
The calls I get are, are safety concerns and for, I'll just say, access for our larger emergency-
Vehicles.
Vehicles to, to get to them, so.
Yeah, currently, they have to use the other entrance on the other side to, to access back in Shady Point.
Correct, correct. So, I'm in favor of this one, when we can do it.
Yeah, it is my area. Constituents from that particular neighborhood, a lot of them walk to Walmart, and there is no access across the Red Arroyo except that bridge. Bridge is pretty narrow. You can hardly get two vehicles in there at the same time, but it's, it's a lot of money, and I, I believe that big portion of that 19.4 is the bridge itself. I'd be in favor of looking to see if we can find the money. I just don't know that it's going to happen right away.
Correct, and there may, and I, I know Patrick and his staff are also looking for, you know, grant dollars out there that may be available for, you know, pedestrian access, those type of things. Maybe if we cannot, can't widen the bridge or replace the bridge to make it wider, more accommodate for that, maybe there is a way that we can accommodate some pedestrian crossings as well in that area, as well as sidewalk and, and some of those improvements as well. So, there may be some grant dollars out there that we can look, again, maybe not to replace the entire road and bridge and widen the entire thing up to what we would like to see it, but maybe at least get some pedestrian elements in there, so we can at least facilitate those concerns.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So, capital and public safety. We've talked in the past with you about a rolling debt program that would alleviate expenditures in the general fund. So, what we're looking at with that is $4.9 million, a bi-annual rolling debt program. That would give us enough funding to cover the transfer that we do every year for equipment replacement, as well as what we transfer over for the fire truck contribution, and that would be over a two-year period. In addition, we actually have $1.3 million earmarked there for fire truck, and that's in anticipation of a need to replace the rescue truck for the fire department, and so since we have that additional capacity, we are recommending using that rolling debt program to fund those needs in those ways. In addition, this, again, frees up money in the general fund, which will help to cover the cost of what's already been committed for the increases to public safety salaries that were implemented in January. And then the short-term debt issue, it's a short-term note that would be paid off in one year. Right now, the capacity allows for about $2.6 million. Once we get final valuations, Vince and his folks will update these numbers, but we're proposing to use that short-term note to cover the cost of public safety radio infrastructure equipment at a cost of $1.5 million, and then whatever is remaining, we would propose to put towards improvements at the river stage. Questions, comments?
Yes, a question, Tina. Is, is this, when you say public safety, we're talking fire, police, all public safety?
Talking about the radio infrastructure?
Yes, ma'am, public safety, radio infrastructure.
I believe it covers all, but I would have to defer to IT Director Bucky, probably, to answer that question.
Okay. If, if, if y'all just can, I'll say, confirm that with him, just let me know. Be my hope that it would be for-
And, and since you're asking about that, that is just the infrastructure part of the project. It does not include the actual hardware, the radios and things that go with that system.
And what would that additional amount be for hardware?
You know, the police department, I think, just received word that they're going to be receiving a grant, and I think that's the purpose of that grant, as part of that funding. And then, okay, yes, quote for radios for fire and police is $3.5 million.
So, would the grant cover that, that total three and a half?
I believe the grant came in at $2 million. I don't know if Chief Howard might want to speak to that.
There he comes.
Good afternoon. How's everybody? Yes, we did receive a grant. It was, we applied for through August Fluger's office, and it was a $2 million grant, and the early estimates on the radio system with the, with what, for public safety, was $3.5 million, so. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
In addition, Kimberly just informed me that the fire department is also working with the COG to try to identify some grant funding for that purpose as well.
Hopefully, we can get, hopefully, yeah, hopefully, we can do, do the hardware as well as the infrastructure part, too. Good.
All right, moving on.
It is Skip, the public safety?
Right. We wanted to talk to the public safety funding, as well as what that would require for a tax rate and a timeline. We do know as, that the state has limited our ability to generate property tax revenue and so that has put some limitations on us in anticipation of the possibility of having to go to an election for the adoption of a tax rate. We are scaling our timeline for budget back to where we do all of the meetings in the manner as if we assume we will go to an election just in case that comes to pass. So, that means that all of our meetings will be in August instead of September this year and we do plan to adopt the tax rate and the budget by August 19th. At the next meeting on May 21st, we will have those dates available so that you guys can look at them and make sure that you're available and work with our schedules to make sure everybody can be there.
And I do wanna talk a little bit about this as well. Mayor council members, as y'all are aware, state legislators, several years back, they passed law that limits the amount of property tax revenues that the cities, cities can receive. And that limitation is three and a half percent per year. That really has hurt our, our city. I know that the legislators will immediately say, no, we're not limiting you guys to three and a half percent. All you have to do is take it to the voters and you can go higher than that. Where our needs are there right now to address public safety. That became a major issue last year. It's gonna be another issue again this year. The three and a half percent limitation, I think, was short-sighted. You look at what cities go by is what we call the municipal cost index. For the past five years, we've averaged around 4.52% as far as the cost of cities actually end up having to expend. And the reason behind that, you look at equipment that we purchase, it's so much more expensive and you've seen the price go up. Inflationary-wise, it's gone through the roof. The chemicals that we buy, everything that we purchase, especially roadwork now, you look at petroleum-based products, everything is going through the roof. So, being limited to three and a half percent, when we know that our cost is higher than that, is what really is hurting the city at this point. I can tell you that the last couple of years that we've kept to the three and a half percent limitation, because it is a limitation, the city has lost out on 7.8 million dollars.
You wanna explain that a little bit more in detail, what you're talking about on 3.5, 'cause no one, many people listening or watching today don't understand what you're referring to.
Yes, ma'am. So, the biggest revenue source that a city has coming to it is gonna be property tax revenues. That is number one. What the state legislators are telling us is from one year to the next year, we will be, will not collect but the three and a half percent revenue above the previous year's numbers.
On existing?
On, yes, ma'am, that's, that's correct, on the existing values. New values is a different story, but again, that part of it really is the huge impact to a city. I mean, 7.8 million dollars is a big chunk of money for the last couple of years. With that said, we're at that point that we did a lot last year to adjust pay for public safety, which got them to about 85, 85.67% competitive. You look at that number, that number is still, is still back there compared to what other cities are paying their public safety officers. So, on our end, in order for us to, to actually fill that gap to where the police officers would be and firefighters would be at 100, and I say 100% right now, I just wanna make sure that I, that I, that I mentioned that as well. In order for that to happen, the gap is like 4.6 million dollars to get them to that point. That equates to about 6.37 cents in the property tax rate that we would have to adjust in order to really meet the need for pay for the public safety. And this doesn't even address the, the non-civil service employees. This is just public safety that we're addressing at this point. But we are there now. Over the last four years, public safety has gone up about 25% over 6% per year. And again, we're being limited to three and a half percent. It's hurting us. And we're at that point right now where we're gonna have to go to the citizens and say, hey, public safety is important to us. I know it's important to y'all, too. We need to do what's right, what's fair for our public safety and address that concern now and say, hey, we need to increase the property tax rate in order to be able to cover that dollar amount. When you start looking at the difference between, our goal has always been to ensure that whatever comes in in property tax revenue covers public safety. Well, it doesn't. The difference right now is over 8 million dollars. So, we're having to supplement from, to the, the, the property tax revenues with sales tax revenues and other fees that the city collects. So, we're short at this point. So, we have to get to that, to that point where we can actually meet the needs that we have. And right now, the way to do it is to look at that property tax revenue, look at the property tax rate and say, okay, we do want to adjust that property tax rate. If we truly value our public safety, we need to start looking at this very seriously.
So, what does that mean?
That means that at this point, we have to, and Tina talked about the two different, we actually came up with a plan, a contingency plan, Tina, I'll let you talk about that, as far as the, the steps that we have to take to take this to the voters. Tina, if you wanna address that as far as those steps, go for it.
Oh, sure. So, if we choose to adopt a tax rate that exceeds the no new revenue rate, then that's, Senate Bill Two does require us to go to an election. And if that's the case, there are a lot of deadlines that shift in that scenario. It has to be, I think, 72 days, days prior to an election, you have to have adopted your tax rate and your budget. And that's why I talked earlier about the compressed schedule. And so, it's really gonna depend on where property tax values come in this year and what that yields. If we see a decrease in property tax revenue, then we would have to figure out how to cover that shortfall. But in order to do anything as far as raises, really for anyone, there's the possibility that we would have to go to an election to at least maintain our existing rate, if not slightly increase it. And so, those are discussions that we'll have to have. Right now, we don't have enough information from the appraisal district to, to make those calculations. We did receive very preliminary estimates, but there's, it's nothing that we can really rely on to provide you valuable information. Tyler, I spoke with him earlier this, or earlier last week, and he did say that he expects to have something a little more reliable, I guess, if you will, by mid-June. And so, I'd propose that we come back and maybe even talk about it at the enterprise funds workshop, just to give you guys an update on where we are with property tax.
But if you were to say we are going to use last year's number as your base number, let's just say you use exactly the same amount or add 3.5% what you're allowed, what would that mean for the average person in terms of an increase in their property tax dollars?
I would have to do some work on that.
Mayor, I just wanted to really introduce the idea right now because we really, as I mentioned a while ago, we just wanna do what's, what's fair. But we also know that in order for that to happen, again, our legislators have been telling us, we didn't limit you guys, all you have to do is take it to the voters. If that is the case, I think you'll start seeing more and more cities having to do that because, as I mentioned a while ago, our costs go up more than that limit that they've given us at this point. They just do. And the only other way to do it is to really start looking at where can we cut back our services. And that would have to happen on a year-by-year basis if we don't take it to the voters. Okay, where else can we cut our services? Okay, we gotta cut our services again. Every year would be a subtraction of services rather than making sure that we're receiving the revenues necessary to actually operate the city.
'Cause you only have two sources of revenue, sales tax and property taxes primarily.
Those are the primary, the big ones.
Primarily, yes.
Yes, ma'am. And even-
'Cause the franchise and the alcohol don't bring in enough to offset, they don't impact it.
Yes, ma'am. And you know that the franchise fee is the third largest revenue that we receive and even that is starting to dwindle as well.
Correct.
So, that is problematic for us.
I think there's questions or comments.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Tina, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, or even in Daniel's mouth. I guess this is for Daniel at this point. If, if we went to the voters and, and said, you know, we want 6.3 additional cents, I believe is the number you used, that would get public safety to 100% of comparable?
That is correct. That is, again, I am throwing, I'm just showing the true gap between the percentage where they are and then the 100%. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Tina, for you, I am concerned about public safety as well as all our other employees. Do, do we have a number yet? Maybe we don't, where we can start ma, start making meaningful progress on all our employees' Would that be the 6.3? And at this point, if it didn't, 100% didn't go to public safety, if 90%, 95% of comparable, is that some information you can, you can get us?
Absolutely. We can definitely get it for you. I was just trying to see if I had it calculated here already. I do, I can say that a gap, the gap in pay to get us to 100% would be 4.6 million for public safety, 3.1 million for other general fund-supported employees, for a total of 7.7 million. But again, that gets us to 100% and I'm not saying that that's our goal.
Well, that's not reasonable.
But we could come back to you with, like, the cost of a 1% raise to kinda give you an idea of what it's gonna take to get wherever it is that you do wanna go.
Okay. But yeah, at least for me, please, that would be helpful.
Other questions or comments, Tom?
So, when you look at property tax values and what they pay for and what you don't, and I'm gonna get into that area that I'm gonna lean on finance for the answer. At 65, we lock a lot of these people down to where they have no more changes.
Correct.
So, what was a broad tax base is becoming a little bit more narrower. And so, we take everybody 65 and older out of the mix of being part of the contributors to the pie.
To the increases.
Yes. So, I think it's important to remember, as we look at this, it's gonna affect this percentage of the population. It's not 100% of the population. It's by far closer to 60-something percent of the population.
Right. And with those preliminary numbers that Tyler sent us, we did see a pretty substantial increase in those freezes.
Right. So, I get that. Now, there's things we look at, but I, there's a cost of doing business and moving forward every day. The cost of operating the city is no different than commercial business for those living at home and we all have rate of, you know, a cost increase. And we, we need to be aware that we're gonna have to assume that burden. If we want our city to be as good as it can be, we're all gonna have to pitch in and have some money in the game. So, I'm not afraid to pursue that, but I think it's real important, we do say what decisions we make affect a centralized part of our community that's closer to 60% than it is 100%.
I think the financial book that, you know, I was referring to earlier today, it reflected a 1.5 million dollar change from 22 to 23 in the exemptions on property tax. That was last year.
Gotcha.
I'm sure it was 1.5.
Well, that exemption thing has come back to bite us several times over 20 years. I mean, when they locked that in across all those boards and Angelo's unique in the fact that we're like the only city that locks in all of those tiers. And it's cost us, we could, those, a lot of discussions we had today could have gone away if we had those-
It would've been less costly.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Questions, comments, anything else? Okay, move on.
So, this is my last slide, but I just wanna reiterate that we are planning to do the Enterprise Funds Workshop June 25th, if that works for everyone. No?
Flat out. I'll leave that day.
I do wanna say that we're gonna be on a very tight timeline, tight timeline, and we're starting to look at the increase in property tax rate, that it's gonna become really difficult to coordinate. And really, when we actually have a date committed, we have to stick to that date. If not, it really throws everything else off, so.
We have some flexibility with this first workshop, excuse me, with both workshops. It's the other meetings in, in August that are gonna be, we have to do them those days. So, with this one, give y'all, let y'all look at these dates, come back next time and decide on them, but we do have some flexibility with Enterprise and General Fund Workshop. We were just proposing to do them a month earlier so that we have more time once we get to the point of where, where we have to get everything done in August, that our staff has a little more time to work on that stuff, so.
So, the 25th meeting in June, could it be backed up to the 21st of June? 'Cause then you'd be here, right?
Right, or Monday, Sunday, or the 24th?
Or even the 18th after the city council meeting.
Monday, 24th? You said the 24th?
Yeah, 24th's a Monday.
Or she said we could do it after the city council meeting on the 18th.
Okay, how cool.
That's easier, just getting it done on-
Absolutely.
Same with city council meeting. So, let's do it on the 18th of June. Could we do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're gonna be here anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's the Enterprise?
Enterprise Workshop.
Enterprise on the 18th.
Yeah.
So, we could do the same thing for General Fund on July 16th, if that works better for y'all, after the city council meeting.
Why don't you plan it for July 16th right now and then give us a day or two to-
Since we're already here.
Come back to you on that, but tentatively, put it on the 16th of July.
Okay.
And then, the next couple of days, if anybody has a problem with that date, you'll let us know, okay?
We're gonna be here anyway, so.
Yeah, that's my point.
Yeah. So, I would, I would say lock that in almost.
And that third date, we just have on there because you'll recall that we don't get our draft of property tax values, of our certified estimates or values, whatever they may be this year, until July 25th. So, we'll be having that General Fund Workshop and discussion before we actually have final property tax values.
But you'll have some indication from him.
But we can get the direction from y'all at the General Fund Workshop and you can tell us what you want and then we'll do whatever we can to bring that back to you, so.
Okay. The key thing is really having a more defined strategy as it relates to property tax rate 'cause that's the driver of this whole conversation. So, the sooner we can nail something that's, something that's within the realm of whatever, we need that date. We need that information 'cause it determines the rest of the general fund and everything else. So, we're just gonna need to push hard to get that information, so.
I'm hopeful that by June 18th, when we do the Enterprise Funds Workshop, we can add a slide or two to go through that, as long as we've received anything from Tyler. But again, we're kind of at his mercy as far as when we receive that information, but as soon as we do, we'll get it onto the agenda.
Okay. All right. All right, so, these tentative schedules have been changed, so that slide's gonna be updated. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, that's it for our presentation. I just wanna thank all of y'all for, for assisting and giving us that direction and we look forward to that next meeting.
We're good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.